Our October 13th, 2016 Longview City Council meeting will now be called to order. Tonight, in recognition of National Down Syndrome Month, our prayer and pledge will be led by two of my favorite people, my niece Alex Mack and our good friend Dalton Autry. So I'm going to take the privilege of walking down and being with them as they say the prayer and the pledge. You all please stand and rise.
In full my lead, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and omnipotent, and just for all.
Please bow your hand for the prayer.
Dear Lord, I want to pray for each one of us today. I want to pray for Mayor Glennie and the city council members and pray for them to have a great meeting. God, I want to pray for everything that's done for us. I think God help them get to grow stronger and become beautiful. God, we love you so much. And just may pray, amen.
Amen.
That was very special. I appreciate that and I appreciate Alex and Dalton coming up and doing that for us and reminding us what it's all about. That's really the whole message here is just what is it all about and where do we really place our priorities? So thank you all for that and for getting this meeting off to a great start. Tonight, with employee recognition, we're going to recognize District 3's revitalization sweep. Indulge me for just a moment, but please listen carefully. On September 13th and September 14th, employees from multiple departments along with Councilwoman Cassia Williams led a revitalization sweep, District 3, from Birdsong to Idlewood and from Marbury to 12th Street. During that time, they addressed many issues including 109 junk vehicles, 71 locations of junk and litter, 56 locations with overgrown vegetation, 327 tires, 32.7 tons of bulky items, and 17 tons of trash. 25 hydrants were painted and the Fire and Police Department made contact with many residents providing information and assistance. The efforts including employees from Development Services, Public Works, Police, Fire, as well as Parks Recreation. So the following, please come forward. Vicki Allen, Jelani Williams, Galen Williams, Jamea Franklin, Gary Johnson, Amanda Ellsworth, Jeremy Horton, Curtis Pitkins, Charles Johnson, Kenneth James, Eddie Pickard, Sabrina Graves, Kaderius Colbert, Marco Garrett, Jackie Richardson, Kendrick Montgomery, Misty Ryan, John Rolls, Chris Clayton, Jackie Hiles, Christopher Dodson, John Williams, Johnny Zachary, William Perry, Josh Flanagan, Michael Shirley, Scott Karen, Daniel Small, Michael Tumanyo, and Cassia Williams. Please come forward. Okay, I'm gonna stand up here. Okay, first of all, let's recap. Did y'all catch some of those numbers? 327 tires, which we can understand that. 32.7 tons of bulky items and 17 tons of trash. This is the kind of neighborhood sweep that we need to become epidemic in our community, not just in one neighborhood, because every neighborhood can do this. But you know what it takes? It takes this. It takes this group of volunteers that will go out and put themselves out there and do something. It's not enough to talk, ladies and gentlemen. We can all talk, but these are doers. These are people that are getting out there and hard work, grit, grime, getting down to it. And I really, really appreciate your efforts in this because without you, this doesn't happen. But with you, this can continue to roll on. I look at it like a snowball. When that snowball starts rolling, it gets up more and more momentum and we get more and more involved and we get more and more done. If we could just get this done in all the areas of Longview, not just one area, not in just these areas, but every area, think about what a great community we would have. But once again, talk is cheap and anyone can talk. But when you get this group out here doing it, led by Cassia and her district, I applaud you, Cass. I've said it over and over. You've taken such a stand to do things in your district and I hope everyone recognizes that. And I know every council person does this. I want to recognize it every time it's done. So I appreciate it. The City of Longview appreciates it. And I guarantee you, these neighborhoods appreciate it. So thank you all very much for taking
Hey guys, smile, be proud. This is a great group. This is a lot of accomplishment right here, all in one place. So I'm very proud of you guys.
That is City of Longview at work right there, ladies and gentlemen. That is all parts of our community. A lot of departments, a lot of cooperation. That's what it takes to do something like this. So I really, really appreciate that. And I know the citizens of the neighborhoods appreciate that too. We are now to citizen comment. I hadn't skipped anything, have I? I got kind of ahead of myself. Citizen comment. I have one speaker card. Ms. Joyce Williams.
Good afternoon, City Council Mayor. My name is Joyce Williams, Program Director for the Boys and Girls Club of Gregg County. On October 20th, 2016, our after-school programs will be participating in the annual Lights On After School, a nationwide celebration of after-school programs. Will be one of more than 8,000 sites across the nation sending the message that after-school programs is key to children's success and that we must keep the lights on and doors open after school. Parents, media, employers, neighbors, schools, and city officials are invited to help us rally support for safe, stimulating after-school programs. In 2015, the Boys and Girls Club of Gregg County served approximately 823 children in its after-school program with 68% attending three or more times per week. During the 2015 survey of 192 members ages nine and older, 88% reported a sense of belonging and security as they attended the Boys and Girls Club after school. Our current hours are after-school to 7:30 PM. We serve members from the age of six to 18 with an increasingly strong teen population. The Boys and Girls Club is structured to provide strong and safe environment to any kid in need, free of barriers, i.e. financial or demographic. We offer many programs such as Project Learn, Passport to Manhood, Smart Move, Smart Girls, and Girl Strong, designed to educate girls on the dangers of sex trafficking. Triple Play, Healthy Habits, Diplomas to Degrees, Teen Connection, Year of the Teen, and the Keystone Club, which is the teen service organization. Recently, the Boys and Girls Club teamed up with the College Board to become the official hub of ACT and SAT free practice and prep with access to free waivers and testing vouchers. The benefits of quality after-school programs are clear. They support working families by ensuring that children are safe and productive when school days end. We are asking members of the City Council to visit the Boys and Girls Club on October 20th at approximately 5:00 PM to rally for the importance of keeping the lights on and doors open for the kids in the City of Longview. Locations at 600 and 610 West Garfield. Please join us as we light a candle for our youth in Longview. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Joyce. We appreciate you. I don't have any more speaker cards. Would anybody else like to speak and fill out a card afterwards? Very well. We're to presentation items. I have three proclamations to read tonight. I'm going to start with our Fire Prevention Day proclamation for Chief Johnny Zachary and Aisha Robinson. Fire Prevention Day, October 14th, whereas the Longview Fire Department has requested that the mayor by proclamation recognize October 14th, 2016 as Fire Prevention Day in the City of Longview. And whereas Longview's first responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education, and this year's theme is "Don't Wait, Check the Date." Replace smoke alarms every 10 years. So now therefore, I, Andy Mack, by authority vested in me by the City of Longview as mayor, do proclaim October 14th, 2016 as Fire Prevention Day in Longview. Thank you so much. You know, you all don't realize, but fire prevention is one of those things that's kind of like a lot of things that we take for granted. It is preventable in certain situations like this, Johnny, and I know, I appreciate you all bringing to the forefront the simple fact, change your smoke alarms, keep the batteries in it, test them. If you have trouble, I guarantee you, there's help available if you need help. And we try to provide fire detectors, smoke detectors for people that don't have them. We do that. So there's no excuse for that. So this is one of those preventable things. It's up to us to be responsible individuals, but we appreciate you all taking the time to bring to the forefront and make this aware so that the City of Longview can be a safer place. Thank you all so, so much. Thank you very much. Next, we're going to do Domestic Violence Awareness Day. Ms. Marla Lamont. Domestic Violence Awareness Today, October 20th, 2016, whereas the Women's Center of East Texas has requested that the mayor by proclamation recognize October 20th, 2016 as Domestic Violence Awareness Day in the City of Longview. The crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy and dignity, security and humanity due to systematic use of physical, emotional, sexual, psychological, and economic control and/or abuse, including abuse to children and the elderly. So now therefore, Andy Mack, by authority vested in me as the City of Longview's mayor, do proclaim October 20th, 2016 as Domestic Violence Awareness Day in Longview. And you know, this is one of those things that is, this is, this is so sad that we actually have to have a day like this. But the truth is, we do. We have to bring awareness. And when you're talking about abusing children and the elderly, it just, it breaks my heart. But you know what? Thank you to you and your organizations that spend the time and the energy and the money and the resources to bring this out so that we can become aware of this. Because without that, it just is another day that goes on and we don't do anything about it. But with this and through the education that you all are providing and the services that you all provide, we can, we can not only make this an awareness day, but help to eradicate it here, at least in our city as well. So thank you so much for your efforts. We appreciate you so much. And finally, we're going to have Red Ribbon Week. LaDon Ingram with Partners in Prevention. We have Red Ribbon Week, October 23rd to the 31st, 2016, whereas Partners in Prevention has requested that the mayor by proclamation recognize October 23rd to the 31st as Red Ribbon Week. Say that three times. Red Ribbon Week in the City of Longview. Alcohol and other drug abuse in this nation has reached epidemic stages and it is imperative that visible unified prevention education efforts by the Coalition of Drug-Free Youth and other community members be launched to eliminate the demand for drugs. So I, Andy Mack, by the power vested in me as mayor of the City of Longview, do proclaim October 23rd to the 31st, 2016 as Red Ribbon Week in Longview. And you know what? This is one of those things, once again, it's all about awareness. And as long as we become more and more aware of these things, then we can start doing something about it. And thanks to you all and Partners in Prevention, y'all are so always at the forefront of taking care of people that need help. And I appreciate you all so much. You're taking care of people that need help and you do it with such a wonderful smile on your face. I've been to this department and I can tell you, it's a joy to be there. So I appreciate your efforts. Thank you for all that you do. All the ladies down there, y'all are awesome. Thank you so much. Thank you to all those organizations that are truly trying to make Longview a better place to be. And Chief Bishop, Public Safety Update, welcome, sir.
Good evening, Mayor Mack, council members, Mr. Willard. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to give you a quick update since the last time we met. Just to kind of give you a little background for the month of September, as you can see, our call load is still answering close to a little bit over 10,000 calls for service. 5,200 of those were dispatch calls and 5,300 were officer-initiated activity out there in the field. We had 181 total arrests for the month of September, 22 felony arrests with 28 charges, and 170 misdemeanor arrests for 318 total charges as well. Last Tuesday, we had National Night Out. What a great night we had. We ended up with a total of 127 National Night Out parties, registered parties. This number is up 18% over last year. And I know I was able to make about five or six of those parties and what a joy it was to see the neighbors coming together and sharing information with the neighbors and visiting with the police and the fire and council members and other city employees, everybody that came out for that night. And I certainly want to thank everybody that had a role in putting this year's National Night Out together. This is not an event that can be pulled off by any one city department. And it was just a great night. And we're already planning for next year and we're hoping to make next year's even bigger and better. So thank you and thank you all for your support to of our efforts in National Night Out. Our best Crime Watch group for 2016, I want to thank the Crime Watch on Marguerite Drive. They were voted this year's best Crime Watch. We had the opportunity to go out and visit with them. I want to thank Jack and Brenda Lanier who put that Crime Watch together and what a great turnout they had. And we got a chance to visit with them and reminisce about some of the things that they've done in their neighborhood to help make their community there a safer place. So congratulations to them. We have a whole host of other pictures from National Night Out on our Facebook page. If you'd like to go to our Facebook page and go across the pictures there, you'll see a wide range of pictures throughout the whole city. So again, thank you to our community members too that participated in helping to make this a great event. Last week, we commissioned two new officers that have started the field training program, Sheila Williams and Sean Isabel. We swore them in as officers and they have started the field training program. With the addition of those two officers, we currently, our staffing is at 162 officers. On Monday morning, we will hire 10 new officers that will begin the Police Academy over at Tyler Junior College, and that will bring us to 172 total officers. So we'll be fully staffed Monday morning. I'd like to remind everybody, we got Halloween coming up, the 31st of this month, and I know several fall festivals across town. I'd like to just urge our motorists to be careful. We'll have a lot of kids out there moving around and just remind everybody to let's make Halloween a safe night as well. Again, a quick reminder about our interactive crime map is up and running. You can access that at longviewtexas.gov/crimemap, and you can take a look and see what's occurring in your neighborhood and know what's going on. And I want individuals to know that they feel free to contact us if they have any questions about what's occurring in their particular neighborhood. But hopefully this crime map will be awareness, bring awareness to the public and what's going on, and hopefully they can work in conjunction with us to help reduce some of the criminal activity that we see. And then I just want to throw a reminder out there again, Gregg County Crime Stoppers, this is a great way for the citizens of our community to anonymously provide information about criminal activity that's occurring in their neighborhoods. It's 100% anonymous and Crime Stoppers will also offer cash rewards for information too that leads to arrests or conviction of individuals that are involved in all aspects of criminal activity. And they can be reached at 903-236-STOP. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions that anybody might have.
Chief, just a big thank you for all the efforts that were put out, as you said, through all the agencies for National Night Out. It's a collaborative effort, but it does strengthen our community. It strengthens our neighborhoods. It gives us a lot of connection with you guys that are out among the citizens, and I think it really helps to build that trust and the relationships that we're trying to build. So thank you for the efforts and all those involved. Appreciate you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Chief Steelman.
Good evening, Mayor Mack, members of council, Mr. Willard. Thank you for the opportunity to update you since our last council meeting of some happenings in the Fire Department. Tuesday of this week, we had an exciting opportunity to play host to the Legacy Longview Group. This is a leadership group of people in and about our city that wanted to experience what the Fire Department's all about. So we tried our best to give them a little taste of that. So we did it with a couple of different scenarios that we set up for them. We actually let these people go into the burning building to see what it's like to put that equipment on and go in and face fighting a fire. We set up a rappel line off of our four-story drill tire and let them scale down the outside of the building to overcome that possible fear of heights. And we set up a vehicle extrication scenario where they got to use the jaws of life tools to see what it's like to handle that machinery to extricate victims out of vehicles. We had a great time. The weather was kind of cruddy on us. It rained most of the time, but it did not slow down the enthusiasm of this group. I'm telling you, it was over the top. I hope they had as much fun as the firefighters did, showing them more about their profession. Just a great time. Just a quick congratulations to three of our battalion chiefs that recently completed the Texas Fire Chiefs Academy. By completing this academy, they earned the designation of Certified Fire Executive. That was Battalion Chief Will Edwards, Battalion Chief Steve Green, and Battalion Chief Roger Groves. This process is part of our internal succession planning in the Fire Department. Our ultimate goal is to have all of our chief officers attend this. And with the exception of two very new ones, we've completed that. So those two new ones have this in their near future, and we'll keep pressing forward with that. An update on Fire Station Number Five. Some of the work is ongoing. We have completed the roof repairs and the interior remediation. We still have some work ahead of us in making some exterior modifications to it and then beginning the interior restoration. So we're still several weeks out, but work is proceeding. And just a quick reminder, again, I'm going to hit you with this one. Every council meeting until the end of the year, our ambulance subscription program is up and running. The open enrollment period is open, and we highly encourage our residents to take advantage of this $70 a year program that covers everyone in your household, all qualified individuals in the event that you use an ambulance, you use our services. It will deter any out-of-pocket expenses that you might have. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay. As Chief Steelman often does, he cursory went over that because he doesn't take a lot of credit for things. But let me just, I'm going to expound on that Legacy Longview thing. I was there and had the privilege of being out there. It was a real privilege. And I can tell you, there isn't one person that left that training facility without an imaginable deep appreciation of what these firemen do on a daily basis. Chief Steelman and the group, they had so much preparation. They had one-on-one training with each individual out there. They had sizing for their outfits that they put on. They really, really rolled out the red carpet and they educated the people. They educated us on how to use different chemicals to put out fires, what it was all about, how they go about it. They showed us what it takes to be a fireman. Let me assure you, it's not an easy task. And the scenarios that he placed for them to be able to enjoy, and they really did enjoy it, although it was quite frightening for some of the, for the participants. Two of my daughters were out there and they thoroughly enjoyed it, but were very apprehensive about going into the burning building. But the firemen held their hands and made sure they were okay, and they taught them things. And one of my children liked it way too much and she felt like she has her calling. And I go, honey, you've already got your calling. Your education's been paid for. You are not going back to be a fireman. But she loved the rappelling and the jaws of life. But just the sheer weight of these, the equipment that the firemen have to carry in these buildings and the technology involved. And I know, we sit up here all the time and we approve things. But what you don't understand until you've ever seen it in action, which I never had before, and it's a shame that I haven't, but I'm glad I've never been in a burning building. But the equipment that they use is paramount for their survival and their safety and the safety of those in the building. The sensors that are on the breathing apparatuses that beep when someone is still too long. And I didn't really understand what that meant until I realized in a burning building, if you're not moving around, then something's wrong with you. And that's how they would find someone that was in trouble. So the money that we allocate, the money that we spend on these individual equipments for each fire personnel is every single penny worth it. And so, Chief, I appreciate what you all did, besides the fact that they cooked an incredible meal for everybody out there and just really educated the public on what you do. And to me, that's such a team-building effort and I appreciate, I know that was a lot of work on y'all's part. Y'all prepared for this for a week, and I really, really appreciate it. And it showed. It was immaculately done. So hats off to you and all the guys and guys that were out there helping the Legacy Longview Group. And it's an unforgettable experience for everyone. If you've seen some of the posts on Facebook, everyone had the same thing. Amazing, unbelievable, outstanding. It was just fantastic. So thank you, guys. That's what makes our public safety a step above everybody else. Appreciate you so much. And why did all of them want to get me on the rappelling rope? I don't understand why they all wanted me on the top of the four-story building. I don't get that. We're now to consent agenda. So any items on the consent agenda council would like to pull off for separate consideration?
Move to approve.
Second.
All approved?
Agreed.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're now zoning. We have a public hearing on PD 16-10. Ms. Joy.
Thank you, Mayor Mack, members of council, and Mr. Willard. The applicant is requesting to rezone from Plan Development to Plan Development General Retail for the construction of a restaurant with a private club and drive-through window located on Railroad west of Gilmer Road and east of Kingston Drive. The proposed site, Plan Development Site Plan contains a one-story building with approximately 29 parking spaces with a drive-through window. Two access points have been provided off of Railroad and one off of Regal Oaks Drive. The restaurant will have a monument sign that will comply with City of Longview's sign ordinance. Planning and zoning and staff recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This does require a public hearing, which is now open. Any speakers would like to speak on this behalf? Council, any questions?
I do.
Mr. Moore.
Ms. Joy, it's my understanding that in order to maintain what they want to do, they have to have at least 51% of their revenue come from food sales.
Yes, sir.
So it has to be a restaurant.
Yes, sir. This request is for a restaurant, and in order to be a restaurant, you must be, 51% of your sales must be food. That is correct.
Okay. And we have no control at all as to their hours of operation, is that right?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Okay. I'll probably have some questions for the applicant if they're here this evening.
Is the applicant here? Is the applicant here? Mr. Moore?
Thank you. First, I want to congratulate you all on your entrepreneurship to try to start a new small business and restaurant, especially in West Longview. And I look forward, if this passes and you build it, to a new cuisine that is not available. But I do have some questions for you. I've gotten several phone calls about your project, most of which seem to be centered around the fact that your bar is going to be open till 2:00 a.m. on Saturday and Sunday mornings.
Okay. I'll just go ahead and state my name for the record, so that everybody knows. I'm Helen Daniel. I reside at 3909 Chase Crest Circle. My husband Owen Glave is absent, and I will be willing to answer any questions. And good afternoon to Mayor Mack and to the rest of the city council. I understand that there is apparently some controversy and apparently a little bit of concern with the residents who live close to the area. And certainly, it is never my intention or the intention of my husband to create any sort of dismay or disruption in the community. So certainly, we will be more than willing to change hours or to facilitate any sort of issues that may arise. The intent, of course, is to predominantly have a restaurant, and the idea with the bar is to have a bar located, I even brought a plan to show that it's not supposed to be a club. We're not going to have any sort of loud music or anticipated long hours. So we've considered that 2:00 a.m., if that is of concern to the neighbors around, we can always change the time down. We've actually thought of changing it from, keeping it, I think we had initially said Thursdays through Saturdays until 2:00 a.m., and my husband and I have thought about it and said we can always reduce it to 11:00 p.m. And of course, that depends on the neighborhood and what the neighborhood wants to, and what patrons will want. And we think, we had a little introductory thing at my house, and most of the people seemed to have been happy with leaving at 11:30 and 12:00. And we come from the Caribbean, where even when we come in late, we tell you we're throwing a party at 8:00 o'clock, and people show up at 9:00, and then they leave at 1:00 and 2:00, and that is just because that is the laid-back life of the Caribbean. And it's not that we plan to be loud and carry on. So if it is concerning to the residents, we certainly don't want to throw the residents off. So we will change and adjust ours to not create a problem. So we don't want to create a problem in the community. We go to church down the road, and certainly, if that's an issue, most of the plan is to have a restaurant and just to have something where people can unwind.
Yeah, if you all would consider changing your alcohol permit application to close at 11:30 or 12:00, like you talked about, I'm sure your neighbors would greatly appreciate it.
And that certainly is quite amenable to both of us. My dad used to always say that his pumpkin changes at midnight, and I'm certain, when I was a teenager, I wasn't too happy with that thought, but I can certainly understand.
Thank you.
All right. Are there any other questions you'd like me to address?
I don't think so. Thank you so much.
All right.
Move to approve.
Well, hold on a second. The public hearing is now closed.
Right.
Is there a motion?
Yes, move to approve.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We are to now, public hearing on PD 16-12. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone from Plan Development General Retail to Plan Development General Retail for two restaurants with drive-through windows at both locations located at the southeast corner of Gilmer Road and Hawkins Parkway. The proposed site plan shows two one-story restaurants with drive-through windows, one being approximately 3,800 square feet and one being 1,100 square feet. The site will have approximately 47 parking spaces, will have one pole sign with a maximum size of 200 square feet and maximum height of 35 feet and a minimum setback of 10 feet. They will meet all other city codes through the site plan review process. Hawkins is a minor arterial roadway, and Gilmer is a principal arterial roadway. Both roadways are appropriate for this type of development as long as access management is followed. This site will have no additional driveways at this location. They will utilize the driveways through Brookshores on Gilmer Road and Hawkins Parkway. Staff finds the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future land use map and surrounding uses. Staff, Planning and Zoning Commission and staff recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This does require a public hearing, which is now open. Any speakers on this issue? Any questions from council?
Ms. Choi, where are we going to put our campaign signs now?
You'll have to ask the new owners.
Public hearing is now closed. With that, thank you, Mr. Wright.
Is there a motion on this?
A move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Please note that I abstain from this vote, please. Thank you. We are now to a public hearing on Z-616-03. Ms. Choi.
Thank you. The applicant is requesting to rezone from agriculture to heavy commercial. The applicant would like to expand their business onto this property. They own the property to the north that's already zoned C2. The subject property was annexed in 2009. When annexation occurs, the property that is annexed is automatically assigned an agricultural zoning designation, and therefore needs to be rezoned when development occurs. Staff finds that the proposed zoning change is consistent with the future land use map and surrounding uses. Planning and Zoning Commission and staff recommend approval of this request. I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
This also requires a public hearing. Any speaker comments? Any questions from council? Public hearing is now closed. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I just want to take a minute to say thank you to Dr. Daniels, the Maxis, the people that are doing this. This is development in Longview, ladies and gentlemen, and boy, are we happy to see that. Taking spots that have nothing going on and redeveloping to something that is going on is what it's all about. So I appreciate that, and I appreciate your confidence in this city to do that. So it shows a lot, and we really welcome that each week. But out of the community interest, Mr. Moore.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. At least a year and a half ago, a glass recycling bin was placed at Broughton Rec. Center. And then at my first town hall meeting last December, that subject came up again, and with the cooperation of Commissioner Primo, we placed bins at the Greigton Community Center. Since then, bins are located at Hometown Hardware, Harden Hardware, and Lowe's, and with the possibility of a couple of more locations. I'm not sure you know about this yet, Chief Steelman, but I'm proposing Station 7, and the Stamper Park Resource Center. Glass makes up about 4% of the residential waste stream, so every pound that we can put in these containers and not put in the landfill saves us money and also helps the environment. Now, all of this is the brainchild of a group of dedicated volunteers who serviced the bins regularly. I'd like to recognize the Safe Inviting Green Neighborhoods Initiative for their Go-Giver efforts to make our community a better place. And if you will stand when I call your name, I appreciate it. Brandon Johnson, Vic Verma, Jim Koger, Randy Beaman, Marilyn Mitchell, Tammy Cromer, Dan Welch, Sky Mitchell, Huey Mitchell, and I just want to thank you all for your efforts and appreciate you very much. Now, their goal all along was to have this program outgrow them, to get it popular enough and used enough where the city would take it over. And a few weeks ago, the city has, sanitation department has an individual that makes regular rounds on Fridays, delivering bins, picking up bins, and picking up missed garbage items, and this individual is going to service all of these containers every Friday. Our goal is to have at least 10 locations around town. And again, I'd just like to thank this group for the work you've done. Matter of fact, one of the individuals, Randy Beaman, designed and built a hoist for his trailer to pick up the containers, because when they're full, they weigh well over 300 pounds. And he did this at his own expense. So again, group, thank you, and I would encourage everybody to recycle their glass products. Thank you for allowing me to do that.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. We appreciate that, and bringing to the light of the community, those are always wonderful things that we get to experience, and appreciate you bringing it to light, and thank you to those that are involved in your continued work for the City of Longview. Appreciate you very, very much.
One more thing, I want to wish a happy birthday to the U.S. Navy. It's their 241st today.
Very well. Thank you, sir. Ms. Snoddy.
Good evening, everyone. I just first want to say, welcome back, Councilman Moore.
Thank you.
So glad that you're back. I've been feeling a little off balance with you not being here. Also...
I saw you were lonesome.
Yes, I was. I was. National Night Out was truly amazing. I had five parties that I had planned to make, but my schedule only allowed me to make four, but I was happy to make those four. I would also like to say congratulations to Officer Johnny Lunt, who is one of Longview Police Department's finest, for 25 years of service. I work with this guy four days out of the week on my campus, so I'm excited to have him here, and just wanted to congratulate him and thank him for his service.
Thank you, Ms. Snoddy. Ms. Williams.
Excellent National Night Out, Chief, phenomenal. I just look for the numbers, they get bigger and bigger. It's really exciting. I'm at the Longview Housing Authority's party. This was their first party, so congratulations, Longview Housing, for doing that. That's the manager, Ms. Chetiva Marshall. It's always good when we can have different departments in the city to actually host parties as well. So that was phenomenal. So thank you again. I attended Texas Municipal League. I serve as a region officer for Region 15 here in this area, and I'm pictured there with Henry Sisneros. Many of you know him as the former mayor of San Antonio and also former United States Secretary of Housing and Urban Development. And one of the things he talked about was regionalism, and I think we're doing that. I know our mayor has had several meetings with the governor and others, and you know, that's what it takes, because a lot of the funding is dwindling away. And so we have to come up with collective efforts as we continue to move our communities forward. So I was very proud to be able to tell him, we're doing that in Longview, Texas. So thank you, and happy Halloween, and please, no scary clowns. Thank you.
Mrs. Yara.
I do have a couple. Okay, first on here is, Longview Dog Park is hosting the Halloween Canine Carnival that takes place at the First Bank and Trust from 4:00 to 6:00 this Saturday. If you have a canine that you have a costume for and want to bring out, there are cash prizes available. I think the best prize is if you and your canine match in costumes. So if you are interested in coming, the event itself is free. Entering the contest is $5, but you do have a chance to win $100 or $150 cash prize. So come on out and support the Longview Dog Park on this Saturday. And then next Thursday, the Junior League of Longview is hosting the Poverty Conference. This is a conference that takes place from 8:30 in the morning till 3:00 p.m. at Laterno's Belcher Center. We bring in a nationally-known speaker, Wes Moore. He's pretty well-known. He's good buddies with Oprah. But anyway, he's written a really wonderful book called The Other Wes Moore, and his personal story is about himself growing up and another young man named Wes Moore, and how their lives took different tracks and what made the difference for him. So it's a story that's really relevant to what we have in Longview. How do we make that difference for our youth? What resources can we provide to our youth to make sure that they become successful adults? So if you can make it for any part of this day, I would really encourage you to come. The conference is geared towards educating people about the issue of poverty in our community and inspiring and motivating you to continue doing what you're doing to fight against poverty and do more. So if you can attend, we'd love to have you. And lastly, I have another canine costume contest. This one is at the Longview Animal Shelter. It is Saturday, October 29th, from 2:00 to 4:00. So if you win some money at this one, take them to the next one on the 29th, which is the trick-or-treat and costume contest. So I hope you all will get out and participate.
Thank you. Mr. Wright.
Well, I would like to second the mayor. It's great to have a couple of new restaurants coming into District 5, so we're looking forward to that. And a week from Tuesday, the 25th, we'll be having a town hall meeting at the Judson Middle School, and we appreciate anybody who wants to come out and ask any questions, have any issues. Please bring them with you, and we'll go through it.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Pertle. Good? Mr. Willard?
Nothing.
Nothing? No jokes about me this week? Interesting. That's nice. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Can I bring my dog, Nanny Mac? To the canine park?
Why did I open that door? Why did I do that? Okay, we have some items of community interest. Each October, the Longview Public Library is transformed into the Haunted Library for the free community event on October 21st and 22nd. Volunteers needed to help with all facets of the event. Please contact the library for more information. Downtown Live continues to the end of October at Heritage Plaza. The free concert series features Noonday on October 14th and Cole Allen on October 28th. I don't know how many of y'all have been so far, but it's been really, really, really good entertainment so far, and the weather's been good, which is nice. I know it competes with Friday Night Football, and I get that, but you know what? Sometimes your teams are not playing, or you're not going, or they're out of town. Don't forget about Downtown Live. It's a great event to be with your neighbors and your friends and just see Longview. It's really, really been a lot of fun. Ribbon Cutting will be held on Monday, October 17th at 10:30 a.m. to officially open George Ritchie Road from McCann Road to Highway 259. The public is welcome to attend the event. Parking is available on Mickey Mountain Boulevard within North Business Park. Now, this is significant. The George Ritchie Extension is going to be a major east-west artery through Longview. But more than that, this has the potential to be a source of commerce for, really, District 5, which definitely needs some industrial or some manufacturers, some retail tax base to help offset the property tax values that are being absorbed by District 5. So George Ritchie is going to be, if you haven't seen it, go out, it looks like a superhighway. It is phenomenal how good it looks, and I look forward to that opening and to people starting to develop out there and bring some more revenues for our community. So hats off to all the people in the city that have been a part of this. I know this was done before, I know I got here, but I know when it started many years ago, and it's nice to see something like this come to fruition. So hats off to all y'all involved, and I look forward to opening that road on Monday morning. We have some upcoming events. We have Rockers, Riders, and Ribs coming up this coming Saturday. We have an event with Dr. Charles Krauthammer. The Longview Museum of Fine Arts has Magic and Mayhem, the Veterans Tribute to Celebration at Teague Park, and Honor America Night. We have a lot going on in Longview. Every one of these events are just something else for us to do in our community. So get yourself out there, become involved, be educated, get your event on our calendar so we can announce it at the meetings, so people know to go to it, and participation will be even better. I want to take a minute to recognize the Leadership Longview Class of 2017. I had a chance to speak to them this afternoon, and some of them stuck around. If you're here for Leadership Longview, please stand up. I want to tell you, this is just a small part of the group that was there this afternoon, but just looking at the group that was there and their enthusiasm and what their desires are for Longview, it's so encouraging to know that we have such wonderful people out there, really working to make our city a better place, and it makes me feel good to know that you all are out there and being led. Tracy, I appreciate your efforts in bringing this today, allowing me to be there to speak to them, and just interacting. It's just really nice to have that communication with such a fine group of people, and I appreciate all y'all's efforts, and I look forward to a lot of good things out of each one of y'all. So thank you very much for participating. Survey. Okay, I know y'all thought this was crazy, but you would not believe how many requests I get to change holidays. And so I thought, well, maybe I'm missing the boat here. Maybe I need to be changing holidays. But this year, Halloween falls on a Monday. Do you think it would be a good idea for City of Longview to designate the Saturday prior as official trick-or-treat day for our city? Well, the survey is interesting. 61% said yes, and 33% said no, which is nice to hear that, but let me just give you a little bit of information on this. I did a lot of research and talking to individuals, and as much as I think this is a neat idea, I don't think this is the place for government to be. I don't think government gets to decide who trick-or-treats, when and where, and what they do. Too many organizations have their own agendas. Too many organizations have their own agendas. They have their own parties. They have their own timing. They have their own neighborhoods. They have their own way of doing things, and I think that's the way it's got to be. If it falls on a Monday, it falls on a Monday. Too much confusion would take place if we tried to designate something as a city and say, "Okay, you only trick-or-treat on Saturday," and the kids that go trick-or-treat on Monday are going, "How come nobody's gotten the candy?" You know? I just, as much as I would like to be able to be continuous in this, I just don't think it's the place for us to be. But it was a great survey. I appreciate, I mean, I had some really nice comments. Some of them said, "You got no business on Halloween anyway." But it is a holiday. It is something that we celebrate, that we recognize, and we need to be safe about it. We need to, as the chiefs were saying, use good judgment, but I just don't think this is a place that we're going to go as a city and start designating, because then I had someone say, "Well, can Christmas be on a different day also?"